But it's also a day to be thinking about for forgiveness if that is the season. Always keep that in mind. Thank you. Do you have any announcements, Josh?
Under two, I will.
Okay, all right. I'll go with the ethics statement. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the council, all council members have a duty to conduct their affairs over the governing board in an open and public manner, free of conflicts of interest. Is there any item on the agenda that the outcome of which will have a direct substantial readily identifiable impact for any council member?
No.
And his opinion, the council's opinion. Does any council member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before this council?
No.
Therefore being that all council members have a duty and obligation to vote. All right, now Josh.
All right, a couple of things. I want to first recognize our assistant town manager, Jessica Trotman, for receiving the Robert E. Shepherd Excellence in Local Government Award last week at Land of Sky Regional Council. I'm just going to read just briefly from this press release. The Robert E. Shepherd Award is presented at the council's discretion to a local government professional who demonstrates outstanding leadership, advances good governance, and strengthens regional collaboration. Dedicated in 2016, the award honors Robert E. Shepherd, the council's first executive director, who served the region for 30 years. Jessica's leadership extends across regional and statewide resilience initiatives. She serves on the Governor's Advisory Committee on Western North Carolina's Recovery, Resilience Subcommittee, the French Broad River Basin, North Carolina Flood Resiliency Blueprint Advisory Committee, and the Swananoa Resilience and Small Area Plan Technical Expertise Committee, and numerous other committees and working groups focused on recovery and resiliency. Her work also includes collaboration with the American Flood Coalition through its Western North Carolina Recovery and Resilience Partnership, where she contributes expertise from Western North Carolina's recovery landscape to shape resources and policy at the local, state, and federal level. We're just proud of Jessica for receiving this award, and I wanted to state that out loud at the council meeting. So, thank you, Jessica, wherever she may be. And then we're going to have Michelle Kennedy read something, too.
Okay, sorry. Good evening, Mayor, Members, Council. I've been asked to provide you all with just a brief statement related to the questions and concerns that have been going on surrounding Black Mountain Brewing. So, I'm going to read the following and then leave it at that unless you all have something you would like to add. Building and fire codes are created out of a belief that there's a risk to the public. It's not for us as a town to pick and choose what's safe. The threshold for safety is established by state law. This is a responsibility that the town of Black Mountain takes very seriously. Unfortunately, previous town employees made mistakes in administering state law. In April 2024, concerns were raised related to questionable permit and inspection activity on the part of previous town inspection employees. Out of an abundance of caution, the town conducted a broad review of commercial structures with open or expired permits and missing inspections. During this review, many permits requiring closings or corrections were discovered, including permit issues at 131 Broadway Avenue, Black Mountain Brewing. In August 2024, the town sent a letter to the property owner directing them to reinstate permits and obtain proper inspections. No response was received. Over the next year, enforcement was delayed by priorities and Hurricane Helene recovery. In August of 2025, the town issued a stop work order after a routine fire inspection revealed unpermitted electrical and interior work on the upper floor. The town consulted with the North Carolina Department of Insurance Building Code Office and the North Carolina Office of the State Fire Marshal to conduct a complete review of applicable codes and permits concerning Black Mountain Brewing to determine whether permits were issued in error. Upon discovery of erroneous permit and inspection approval, the property owner was notified of violations present and made aware that the property must conform to the applicable provisions of the North Carolina Building Code. A report of discrepancy was compiled detailing records, conversations, and applicable NC Building Code sections. In November 2025, town staff met with the engineer and architect of record to review 19 specific corrections, ranging from fire rating, egress, accessibility, and deck construction requirements, to electrical, plumbing, storage, and site safety issues. The meeting confirmed that Appendix D Fire District requirements apply and outline clear options for bringing the structure into compliance. It was determined that previous town employees had, in fact, acted in error in their permit issuance and inspection practices. At least one of these employees is no longer certified to enforce North Carolina State Building Code, as he is no longer licensed by the North Carolina Code Officials Qualification Board. It is important to note that willful failure to perform the duties required by law or willful improper issuance of a building permit or certificate of compliance by a building inspector in North Carolina is a Class 1 misdemeanor in accordance with North Carolina General Statute 160D-1109. In addition to these facts, a property owner or licensed contractor also has a legal obligation to comply with North Carolina Building Code and/or applicable ordinances. Our responsibility is to inspect for compliance and, when necessary, issue orders to correct violations in accordance with state law. The town is not taking the position that the deck structure itself is in jeopardy. The modifications demanded by state law would have been required in some fashion since the beginning of the construction of the deck. This is simply a deferred action. This is an objective application of state law, and we look forward to working with the property owner to bring the property into compliance.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have citizen comments. Please note that these are for three minutes, and you can state your name and address. First up, Blake Martin.
Thank you, and I apologize for standing, but as a former prosecutor and a judge, when I address a body, I always stand. My name's Blake Martin, and my address is 3 Shakespeare Circle, that's within Cheshire in Black Mountain. I appeared before you back about six or seven months ago when you were debating the future of Black Mountain Golf Course, and my recollection at that time was that I told you I thought Black Mountain Golf Course was the jewel in the town of Black Mountain. I still believe that, but I come before you tonight as the current president of the Cheshire HOA to tell you that there are three additional jewels that are here in the town of Black Mountain that need to be recognized. A portion of Camp Branch flows through our neighborhood, and Helene wiped that out to where it had to be completely reconfigured. During my tenure as president, I dealt with Chloe Smith, with Jennifer Tipton, and with Ann Phillip in trying to navigate all of the intricacies of local, state, and federal water and land management in order to get that put back together. And I'm here to tell you tomorrow morning at 10:30, if any of you want to come join us, we're actually going to walk the stream from top to bottom where it dumps under number nine, because we have finished with their assistance the complete restructuring of Camp Branch as it comes through, and it is now ready for the contractor to remove their equipment and us to return to life as normal. We would not have been able to do that had it not been for plain talk, patient listening, and expert qualifications of those three ladies that helped us out. I'm not a hydrologist. I'm a speech communications major and a former prosecutor and a judge, but they explained it to me in ways that helped me be able to deal with the neighborhood and to deal with the contractor to get it done the way it needs to be done so that we're in compliance. I know you hear a lot of stuff from people about things that are wrong with some of the employees here in Black Mountain, but I'm here to tell you, those three ladies, and in particular Ms. Phillip, who is the one that headed up all of the restructuring of the stream itself, they deserve every bit of commendation and praise that this town and this council can give them. They are truly the jewels in the town of Black Mountain. And that having been said, I'll take the advice I used to give people when they appeared in front of me. When you finish doing your talking, it's time to be quiet and move on. I've got a deacons meeting over at the church, so I'm going to move on, and thank you for allowing me that opportunity just to come and tell you that you've got three ladies there that really serve this town and its residents in exemplary ways.
Very good, thank you. All right, Linda. And the last name is?
I'm Linda Shufflett. I live 319 Circle Lane in Black Mountain. So, I came and spoke on October 13th at the hearing about the senior center and the dragging of the heels and getting it open way, 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 way too long. I'm not going to rehash that. Then there was a special meeting a week later, and they appropriated $15,000 for the senior center. We've still, that was two months ago almost, we've still never been updated about when we can expect to get in. You got two bids, one for $10,000 from Ewing Engineering, and another one from another corporation. They're both licensed engineers who assess the building, and the other one was for less than $5,000. They said it didn't require any electrical or plumbing, but if it did, it would cost max $10,000. They said it would take seven to 10 days to come in and do the joist work that they needed to do. Here we sit, two months later, and the seniors are suffering here in town. So, I would like to, I know none of you can respond to me today, but I would like to get an assessment, why we went to Bowling Rock, 200 miles away, and went to contract for another engineer to come and assess it when it's already been assessed? And Ewing is a very reputable corporation who has done multiple buildings and stuff here in town, and they're close. They're here in Asheville. So, I guess I'm just not understanding that. It's like the dragging of heels. And so, I also wanted to say that a lot of people are feeling and gathering together about it that there's a lack of leadership here in town, that things have slowly, since I moved here in 2018, have gone downhill. You can't get anybody to answer you. We're the taxpayers. We pay your salaries. We have the power of the vote, and I think you all need to remember that. And town council should be telling Josh Harold what to do, not the opposite. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time. And thank you, Mayor Sobel, for all your hard work and your heart. I appreciate it.
Next up, former mayor Carl Bartlett.
Carl Bartlett, 277 North Fork Road. I haven't told you this, but I got the answers why it's not been done. About several weeks ago, I swung into the senior center and stuck my head in the door and a couple of guys in there, and I said, "Is this parks and wreck?" They said, "Yeah." I said, "I thought y'all were moving." They said, "No, town management has told us we're not going anywhere." So, there's your answer. Also, being a banker, I've been looking at your finances, and you've got problems. You don't have a finance director, haven't had it for some time. The revenue sources are not what they should be. Really, I think you're on the border of legamn municipalities calling for unit assistance. And if you do that, you're really going to be under the gun. So, you need to take a hard look at your finance department. My opinion, you really need a forensic audit to tell you exactly where you stand. I don't think anybody, including all your staff, knows exactly where you stand in your finances. When you look at the budget and you look at the budget year-to-date, you're in trouble. So, it's very obvious, anyway, that you're headed for a pretty good tax increase. Something's got to happen, and you've been spending money freely, just like going to Bowling Rock to get another assessment on the senior center. It's just ridiculous to pay that when you already had it. I know you folks probably feel like you're doing a really good job. And to reinforce that, I'd like to challenge you. How about doing a recall referendum to the town to vote on whether they feel like you're doing a good job? That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Carl. Next up, Cheryl Milton.
Cheryl Milton, 202 Mountain Street, Black Mountain. This morning, as I was driving along, WWNC radio show with Mark Starling and Tank Spencer came on. Mark Starling brought up that they had said something about Black Mountain Brewing problems last week, and before the day was over, an advertisement that the town of Black Mountain had been running continuously for the past five-plus years was canceled. Mark Starling said he felt that the town was being retaliatory in their action of canceling the advertisement because they'd brought up problems, the problems the town was having. I listened to what Michelle Kennedy had to say, and I gathered that she might have been speaking in terms of Dan Cordell, I'm not real sure, but I think that you all as town council members and as the town staff should also acknowledge the fact that you all allowed Charlie Russell to be the town building inspector without anyone checking behind him, and he never once passed the very first test to be a building inspector. Part of the stuff on the Black Mountain Brewing was signed off by Charlie Russell. It's no secret in here or anywhere else in town, John Richardson and I are not friends, but I can tell you this, I'd stand behind John right now and the fact that the town has done him wrong. Why does it take you years? Okay, so, oh, we're all about safety. Well, you can't tell me that our town inspector was so busy during Helene that it took him 18 months, 15 months, whatever, to actually go down there and do much about it. The other thing that I look at is, you all have a problem with the building inspector who is allowed to be on Facebook on multiple different pages arguing with people. I'm going to look at Rhine Stone and Archie Pertiller. The two of them have worked public jobs. Ryan still is. I don't think that either one of the two of them would have been allowed by whoever their supervisor was to be on the Facebook arguing. I can assure you, when I worked at the hospital, that was not allowed. There are things in this town that need to be rolled back in, and right there sits one of them. And I'll tell you exactly like I've said before. I helped Josh Harold get here, and I can tell you this, I'll celebrate like mad when some of y'all decide that it's time to get rid of him, because he's on a one-way bus to do whatever he chooses to, and the fact is, he doesn't pay taxes in the city because he doesn't own any property. Neither does Jessica Trotman, neither does not many or any of the other town directors. I'm sorry, but I feel like that my, as a citizen, that I actually pay taxes, and I should be listened to for my three minutes.
And you're not here to attack anyone individually?
That's your thought, and I have mine, but you all have the picture of I'm representing a lot of the people within this town that didn't come to speak.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you, sir.
Next up, Richard Hudson.
I like to stand myself, too. Richard Hudson, 106 Pleasant Drive Circle. In the words of Tom Hanks in Apollo 13, Houston, we got a problem. I will list these in no particular order of importance. Number one, our public servants do not know how to serve the public. All town employees should be required to take a remedial course in how to serve the citizens they were hired to help and protect. Our upper management to do their jobs in a tyrannical and vindictive manner. Josh Harold openly disrespects our highest elected official, and as a result, his underlings do also. He, along with Jessica Trotman, Chief Steve Parker, Jamie Matthews, and Michelle Kennedy, should be summarily fired for their insubordinate behavior. COVID is over. Open up the offices so the public can assess the people they pay. Put the water department back like it was, so you don't have to talk to employees in a two-cheeker hallway. People should be able to access the planning department and the town manager's offices without picking up a phone. Work from home should not be allowed. Phones should be answered and emails returned promptly. Number four, quit slow-playing repair efforts. Get the senior center fixed. Another engineering report was not necessary for a $10,000 repair. Open the golf course fully, including repairing the maintenance building. Wintertime should be used to cut back the creek banks to improve an eyesore and playability. Fix the bridge on the Oaks Trail. Sell the pickup truck that's been sitting idle on the golf course parking lot for months. Take your fence down at the rail yard and use it to repair fencing at Public Works. Quit cooking the books when dealing with FEMA. Buildings can be repaired quicker and with less money if we weren't trying so hard to get new for old. Number five, town council needs to do their job. Your job is to be the idea and dreamer people. We do it backwards. Let management come up with the ideas, and then we just rubber stamp them. I know of no concrete thing this council has come up with and implemented on their own. Lastly, quit making your town look bad to the news gathering media. Y'all should all read Fred McCormick's editorial in The Valley Echo. If I had a manager that talked and treated the press in a manner that Josh does, I'd make a motion right now to go into closed session and give him his walking papers. Enough is enough. Make a change, give us our town back.
Thank you, Richard. Starlings, NICC. Help me pronounce.
Nicole.
Nicole.
Yeah, sorry. I'm Nicole Starlings. I live at 267 Front Way here. I have something that's on the federal level that I'd like to bring to your attention that could affect us here greatly. You may have seen the flyer outside about the 704 issues and what's happening with the wireless towers that are going up. So, I have brought just some information to inform you, because as our leaders, I think it's up to you guys to have a voice for us here on the, to some of our representatives and in the Senate. Right now, we've got votes going on that will basically say, we're not allowed to have any jurisdictionary say as to what goes on in our community. And to me, I don't care what it is, we have a say, and anybody who wants to, like, greenlight something, I think should, it doesn't live here, I have a problem with that. So, I have brought some handouts for you guys, and basically, it just talks about, there's some links on here about the health and safety aspects of this. There's fireworks involved with some of these towers. Also, ecological damage can occur as well as health effects, and you won't have any writer say so as to where they can be placed. They'll put it right outside your home, or right in the church, or right in the schools, and you'll, it's up to you to make a difference now by speaking with them. So, I brought some info, and that's all I have to say.
Very good. Thank you.
Can I just leave this?
You can do it. Wesley, help me.
Next up, Lisa Milton.
Lisa Milton, 25 Manny Lane, Black Mountain. I'm here to discuss the elephant that's grown too large to get in this room, and that would be the Black Mountain Brewing issue. This is not the first time a business has encountered this. My husband and I purchased a piece of property, commercial property, here in Black Mountain in the early 90s. Basically, it was a dump. It needed a tremendous amount of work. It needed a tremendous amount of fixing, and over the years, we worked, we poured everything we earned into that building to bring it into a piece that was an asset to the community as opposed to an eyesore. We sold the building in November of '22, and the sale occurred based on the couple that bought it. We sat down with them, we told them the permits we had, the things we had done, the repairs that had been issued, the basis of what we could do in terms of the number of people we could do events for, and the opportunities that the property afforded. That was most of the reason that this couple bought the property. After the sale was completed, they came to the town because they were going to do a couple of changes in the place. When they came in, they were told that basically there were no permits on our building. Nothing had been approved, nothing was permitted. And at that point, when the owner called me back, my heart literally stopped, because my husband and I are older, my husband's health issues were the need to sell the building and let it move forward. The idea that I had lied to them made me out to be a person that I am not. Our father taught us, the one thing you do is you tell the truth, because you don't have to wonder what you said to someone. But that made me look like I was a cheat and a liar to sell a building. And it took me two or three days to basically gather my thoughts and figure out, what was I going to do? Because if that sale was overturned, the cost of it, by all rights, they could sue us, they would get thousands of dollars. It could have the potential to bankrupt us. This was all because permits that I knew I had, that I knew I had inspections, did not exist, and I didn't know what to do. Dan Cordell, we were one of the first jobs that Dan Cordell inspected when he came here, and he inspected our electrical inspection one of the first times. And he went through, there were a couple of things that had to be fixed, he made notes, we fixed those things, and he came back and inspected them. I knew we'd had inspections. I knew every time he came, but yet the town didn't have them. I am a paper hoarder, and for once, my stacks of paper paid off, because I thought to myself, when did Dan come? When did he inspect? And it was when we added a kitchen on, a commercial kitchen.
Lisa, three minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Anyway.
Well, at this point, I just hope that you will basically look at the impact that this has and the impression it leaves with the town, that people are not going to want to come here and invest their money if there's a question, that that money may be poorly invested, and they can be on the hook for something that they're not guilty of. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Next up, John Richardson.
Good evening. I'm John Richardson, 111 Church Street. I really just like to go and buy a beer right now. Thank y'all for your service to the town. I genuinely say that, and I genuinely want to offer to anybody in this room that has a problem with anything I'm going to say, let me apologize in advance. I would love to have a beer or a cup of coffee with you and actually talk about the issue and talk about what the solutions look like. One of the reasons that Matt and I started Black Mountain Brewing was just for this very reason, so neighbors could sit down and talk about tough conversations, disagree, and still have a beer and respect each other. So neighbors could sit down and talk about tough conversations, disagree, and still have a beer and respect each other. So that being said, let me apologize in advance because I'm going to say some hard stuff. One question I have for you is can we trust you? Can we trust you? I worked with the department that Josh was over when, 2016, when I bought that building and shared the vision of what we wanted to do. And we were told we could do that. All along the way, we've worked hand in hand. We were told we could do that. We have tried our best to be good citizens. Have I missed things? I am sure that I have. Michelle Kennedy just came and said that they sent me an email about the violations in August of '24. That went to my attorney, who was in conversation with y'all's attorney, not Craig Justice, but Brian Golden, about the rail yard at that point. So I'm, we responded. I know we did. What concerns me is I don't trust Michelle Kennedy. And the reason I don't trust Michelle Kennedy is that there is still, or as of Friday, a press release that she put out on September the 15th that cites the site plan from 2022 at the rail yard as the reason that they're having to put the fence up, that I have not done stuff pertaining to that site plan in 2022. She's the new planning director. In August, August the 14th of '24, a new site plan was agreed to by Craig Justice's predecessor. This is the new planning director and she does not even know that there is an actual new site plan that is in place. The real frustrating part of this is that that press release, which is a lie, is still up on the website today. And y'all don't care about that. Y'all don't care about that. So my question is, can we trust you? Because I have put my trust in you. I have put my trust in the department that Josh managed and that Jessica has managed for the entire time that we have been trying to build this, this building out. And let me restate, nobody wants this building to be safe more than Matt and I. Nobody wants to own a building that, that is not safe. But my question is, can we trust you? What I'm not hearing from the town is any common sense solutions.
That was it. I appreciate it.
Yep.
Three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank y'all. Richard King. Remember, you got three minutes.
Okay. I'll make it fast. Richard King, 1104 North Fork Road. My wife and I own a pure and proper across the street. And for 10 years, from '03 to 2013, we built houses. We had a construction company called Brooks and Builders. And we built for probably six or seven different municipalities across the, you know, across this area, all the way to Cachers. And in that 10-year span, I had never had a problem with the building inspector. You know, Dan Cordell was our inspector here and for most of the time that we were working. And then David Curry up in Montreux when we were doing stuff there. And Dan Cordell was firm, but he was fair, you know? There was a very good balance between, you know, you know, his job and being fair. You know, the building codes aren't subjective to what the inspector thinks he wants to see. You know, it's pretty black and white, what, what needs to happen. And when we were building out Pure, Charlie was our inspector when we started. Wesley in the county was our inspector halfway through. And then Rick finished up the project at the end. And we never had a problem until the very end. And then we had all kinds of problems. But when you're building a restaurant, you don't, you can't afford to stretch it out for a couple of months because every day you're losing lots of money and every week and month. So you have to just comply. And you just go with the flow and, and we did. And I just said, we'll just get open. And then I brought my complaints. I tried to, I tried to reach out to Josh Harold and left him three or four voicemails that never got replied to. And I came down and tried to meet with him in person and Jessica Trotman stopped me and was like, no, you can't meet and wouldn't let me meet. And so like most, you know, people, we just kind of, all right, fine, get back to doing what I need to do. Then when the hurricane came and we were feeding people at the rail yard and we were feeding, we fed over 27,000 people in three weeks. And we had a massive operation going on down there. Hank Burton just did like a surprise inspections two or three different times. And I'd have these, these, these people go like, hey, man, the inspector came by and is like telling us to move all the stuff around. And we're in the middle of feeding people. And I'm like, what's going on with this guy? And I don't get it. And so I came up and tried to complain about that and nothing. And the final thing that just, you know, just struck, stuck in my crawls, I was in a town inspection truck parked right behind the stairwell to my, to my restaurant. And it bothered me and I was like, but I didn't say anything. It was parked there again a week later. I wrote a note and I said, hey, this is not a parking spot. Please don't park here. When I got back in my car, there was a note on my cart that said, mind your own business. I brought that note up here to Josh Howard and I don't think it ever got to him because Jessica Trotman said she would give it to you. I don't know if Josh ever received that. But it's like, this isn't a public servant. This is a public servant. That's not a, that's not a, something that someone does. That strikes to me, strikes me as someone that feels like they're above the law or they're immune to anything. And I think sometimes when you see these different things that come in from, you know, anyways.
Time's up, but appreciate it.
They're not being an asset. They're kind of being a liability at this point.
That does it on citizen comments. Now we got communication from staff.
So we'll have Buncombe County. We have Mr., I'm going to get this wrong.
Krieger?
Oh, Krieger.
Krieger.
Close. He is the county tax assessor. He's going to go over the, this upcoming year's tax reappraisal.
I want to thank his council here for having me here today.
I have with me, this is Joe Turner. He's our assistant department director of the assessment office. Just joined us a few weeks ago. So probably along with me here, come to this meeting. Thanks again for having me. So this presentation, just want to hear, talk about our office just a little bit, touch on what we do. And then talk some about reappraisals. But at the end here, I'll answer any questions you might have. And if I can't get those answers for you right now, I'll get them to you. I promise you that. So just a little bit about the assessment office. So basically assessment, all taxable property in the county and all in North Carolina, all of our counties in North Carolina do it the same way. It's a self-reporting system. So it must be reported to your property, whether it's personal property, real estate, personal property being mobile homes. If you're business personal property, it's going to be machinery, equipment, furniture, things like that. You need to report that to the assessment office. And also make sure it's reported correctly and listed correctly in our office. And if you have questions about that, you need to contact your local assessment office and have a conversation about your property. But it's a self-reporting system. Our office, we also utilize, implement present use value and exemption programs as well as your mandated for the state. We just implement them and making sure folks qualify and try and give me folks in those programs as we possibly can as well. So, you know, personal property, its value, January 1st age here. We're about to enter the personal property listed period. That's the month of January. You can also extend that into March. But you need to contact our office. You'll be getting those list sheets in the mail if you already list with us. And if you do not list with us, contact our office and we'll get you a list sheet so you can list your personal property, mobile homes, chain equipment, items like that. So reappraisal, the main reason I'm here, that's regarding real estate, commercial, residential, and all vacant land. We do that every four years in Buncombe County. We delayed it one year because of Hurricane Helene. But in North Carolina, most counties do it every eight years. We do it every four. No, all counties are required to do it every year. Most do it for years, and we do it for years as well. So in our office, we're responsible for mapping, tracking ownership of 135,000 parcels. We have 7,000 exemptions and tax relief accounts, 9,000 business personal property accounts, 9,000 individual accounts. We also value over 250,000 registered motor vehicles. And we also have over 9,000 rental accounts. Those are short-term rentals, long-term rentals that folks are required to list with us. That number's jumped up over the last few years. We've been really promoting that program, making sure folks list their rental property with us. Now, we also, 135,000 parcels, we, our appraisal team values that. In charge of value on all of those parcels as well, commercial, residential, vacant land, right? So in, all that work is done by 35 employees, 12 appraisers, real estate appraisers. And that's equivalent, what that ends up being each year since 2021 reappraisal, so over $50 billion in value for the county. Now, so what is reappraisal? Reappraisal is a process of revaluing all land, vacant, residential, commercial, to its market value every four years here in Buncombe County. So like I said earlier, we're on a four-year schedule. We're on a five-year now because of Helene. And we will reappraise again on schedule 2029 as well. So the goal is to be 100% of market value. So what's that mean? It means we want to get your value as close to what you expect to sell your property for, whether you participate in that market or not. So what we do is we track real estate listings and market transactions. You know, I always say, you know, folks want to kind of ask me, how do you come to your values? Just look at the market in your neighborhood, in your area. That's what we're going for, homes that sell like your home. Our goal is to get the value as close to that as possible. And that is required by state law. All 100 counties in North Carolina have to do it that way. So why do reappraisal? So North Carolina Department of Revenue is requiring us to do so. So on January 1 of '23, we received a letter telling the, telling our office that we must reappraise within three years. So if you look at that chart on the left, that, those are, that's our actual assessment level, reports to DOR every year. '21, when we did our last reappraisal, we were near 100%. 105, 95% is the real goal there. That's a good quality reappraisal. So you can see it starts diving down. And then in 2023, we got well below that 85% threshold. And that's the threshold of acceptability. When you hit that, they send you a letter, tell you you must reappraise in three years. So January 1 of '26, that's three years. So why do we reappraise? Equalization and fairness. We want to make sure that everyone is valued equitably and fairly in the county so that they can pay their fair share of property tax. Now, one example I like to say, say every time, is three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath ranch. That's going to be worth certain value here in Black Mountain. But if you put that same house in Hall Creek, if you put that same house over in Bent Creek or in downtown Asheville, it's going to be worth something different based on its location. So that's a part of equalization. We want to make sure that we are assessing it as close to their market values we can. So how do we do this? 135,000 parcels, right? We cannot do a fee appraisal on every parcel. We have a huge staff. So what we use is mass appraisal. It's a mass appraisal methodology. But we use the same purchase value that a fee appraiser would. We just do it in a mass appraisal method. So cost approach, that's for very unique properties, specialized industrial churches, government buildings like this one right here. We put a value on government buildings as well. Self-comparison approach, that's your most common because there's plentiful data. Your single-family homes, what participates in that open market more frequently? Condos, townhomes, single-family homes. Income approach, that's going to be for your income-producing properties, your offices, warehouses. Basically, it's what an investor would expect to see in return. So every reappraisal, we have reappraisal goals. So after 2021, I don't know if you all remember, but we formed an ad hoc reappraisal committee. And that committee was formed with, with appraisers, real estate agents, also community leaders. And there were some residents there as well. They formed that board and they actually came up with some recommendations. And we also commissioned an equity study done by a gentleman named Kevin Keen with over 30 years of reappraisal experience. He's a mass appraisal expert. He came to Buncombe County, worked the county, stayed here a while, interviewed all of our staff. And he also came up with recommendations on how to do reappraisal and actually helped us with a plan for the future in our office to help improve our data quality. So what is really cool, I think, about these two entities or whatever coming together to make the recommendations, they really aligned on a lot of the same thing. And it was about outreach and it's about data. Making sure we inform the public, we go to these meetings like this right here, we get on the news, we talk about reappraisal, talk about our, our office functions and get the word out. But also it's about data quality. If you have bad data, you're not going to have a good reappraisal. Now, quote on the right there, that's pretty good data resulting in a pretty good reappraisal. It's not a good quote. It's not a positive quote because you want excellent data because you want an excellent reappraisal. So basically outreach, education, improving our data quality. We actually have appraisers assigned to luxury properties and also modest properties. We're really focusing on those to focus and make sure. Luxury properties are very unique. They're hard to appraise. They're definitely hard to appraise in mass. So we have folks dedicated to those reviewing all those properties. It's data modeling. We're just getting more technical in the office previous years. So we're honing in on that. We're doing dashboards, doing a lot of maps, a lot of coding, a lot of analytics, modernizing workflow, revaluing all the land in the county, market area redelineation. These are things most assessment officers are doing. We're just doing them in a more technical way than we have in the past, doing a better job. Also transparency audits and measures. We're going to, we're doing more outreach, getting some more data out there to the public and available on our website. So what do you need to know? So if you own property in Buncombe County, in the town of Black Mountain, your value is going to change. There's no doubt about it. Okay, so every four years, we must reappraise. Every reappraisal, your value should change in some form or fashion. Now, that chart to the left shows year-over-year growth from 2016 to 2025. This is a taxable value. So you put this up here to show you what a reappraisal does to your taxable value, tax base. So 2017 was, was a first reappraisal up there. That value increased 17%. And each year, you grow two and a half to 3% year-over-year. You can see in 2021, it increased by 25%, okay? Now, year-over-year growth in between reappraisals is usually related to building permits, new parcels being created, subdivisions being, being built and all those things. Reappraisal is market value adjustments. It's all those things, but there's also market value adjustments. So in 2021, we set everyone's market value to what we believe they can sell their home for on January 1 of '21. And we used 2017 to 2020 sales to do that. So for this reappraisal, we're going to use 2021 sales, 2025 sales, so five full years of property sales to set everyone's market value. So one thing we always like to point out is reappraisal is not a mechanism to, to increase revenue. I always get chuckles on that, but I like to tell folks, property tax bills, two things. It's your rate and your value. We want to make sure your value is correct, as correct as possible. And because that's the one main component of your tax bill. The next one is the rate. And that's set by local budget offices, county, municipal, and voted on by boards like this one right here. So what do you need to know right now? If you're a resident or a business owner here in Buncombe County, you own real estate, review your property record card. Please do that. Go to tax.buncombeinc.gov, review that record card. If you think there's inconsistencies there or data issues, need to let us know because we want to make sure we got your data right. It's like I said earlier, if we don't have your data right, your value's not going to be right. So work with us. Make sure that you check the website, go to your property, look it up. It's really easy to look up. Look up the address or your name. It'll come right up for you. So right now, reappraisal is final stages. We're working all the way through the month of January, hoping to get notices out the door early to mid-February. So we'll start, you'll start seeing me get the word out about that here in the recent coming months. And they'll be visible online as well. So we're working on a new appeal website. It's going to make folks, make it a lot easier for folks to go to appeal online with the goal of you being, you get that notice in the mail. There could be a QR code on there. You scan it and go right to the appeals website. And there'll be instructions on that appeal for telling you what you need to do to appeal your property. You can always call our office. So we're even, we're even going to have an option to go online and book an appointment with one of our appraisers so you can discuss your value with them. So talking about appeals. I want to make sure everyone knows that they should not be afraid to appeal their property. Got to talk to us, let us know. I'm encouraging folks to appeal if they don't agree with that market value. Have that conversation because if you don't have that conversation, it's not very likely you're going to get your property value adjusted. So you need to talk to us. We need to know because we cannot go in your homes. We don't do that. So if we don't know what's inside your homes, let us know. Maybe there's some issues in there. We need, we don't know about that could lower your property value. So have that conversation. That's the important thing I want everybody to take away from this presentation. So what's next? Just touching on it earlier, but right now, we're in the final stages, working through it, getting through the nitty-gritty details of reappraisal. It's a lot of work. Now, we're in the year interviews as well, but once we get through January, we'll be finalizing everything. The informal appeal period will be open then, but really, there's no reason to appeal until you get your value notice. You'll be getting that in February with those instructions. And we'll even have a deadline for the appeal period, which will be early May to do that. So please, open that mail when you get it. Look at the instructions. Talk to us. So we're working on the formal appeal period. So you'll deal with the appraisers, our appraisal team on that. If you don't like that, the results, and you want to go further. If you don't like that, the results, and you want to go further, you can go to our local board. It's county residents, professionals that work here in the real estate industry. And they'll hear your property tax appeal and say, hey, kind of like this one. And if they decide on a value that you don't like, you can even go to Raleigh for it. So there's avenues for our property owners to take. I want to make sure everybody's aware of. It's not, we're not the end-all, be-all. So we want to make sure that everyone has an avenue to appeal their property value. And that's it. Does anybody have any questions?
I've got a question. So you're looking at values from 2020 to 2020, or 2021 to 2025. You know, a lot has changed in the housing market in the four-year, five-year, and especially here in Buckham County. You know, how does, how does that weigh into?
Certainly, yes. So more recent property transactions, you know, they take paramount, right? So we look at those, and also we do what's called time adjustments on those. So we're tracking, kind of a house example I mentioned earlier, we're tracking homes like that one that have sold since 21 all the way through and seeing what their value projects to be now. So there's ways to do that, but we are tracking that market and we're making sure that we are as up-to-date as recently as we can be on those. So the more recent ones are really what we're digging into and we go back further when we need more information. Does that help?
Sure.
Yeah.
So we've gone five years. Are we going to do the next one in three years to get back on schedule?
Yes, ma'am, that is the goal, 2029.
There shouldn't be a lot of changes. Well, who knows, but?
Yeah, who knows? I mean, in 21, we had 2020 and through 2017 sales, right? And then what happens? COVID hits and things just went through the roof. So you saw that on that chart, we immediately went to, I think it was 86% the year after reappraisal. So we almost got that letter next day.
So since our budget year starts, when do we get the info that we'll need to do the next budget?
Well, when that appeal period's open and notices start going out, you'll start seeing the numbers come out. I give, our office gives projections, so your budget office will be getting projections from me or Joe here, and we'll, we'll make sure that we, we do that through all the municipalities here in Buckham County. So it'll be throughout that time. And we'll hit, we usually send several projections as updates because that appeal period's happening. So appeal periods can drop value.
It moves.
It does move, so.
Good enough. Appreciate your time.
Yep, thank you all for having us.
I have handouts up front, so I just want everybody to know there's reappraisal.
Communication from mayor and town council?
We were not going to do, I thought we had four B and C and.
Yeah, recovery contracts in Ridgeway update.
I have Jessica for recovery, and then I have Jamie in there for Ridgeway.
Good evening. I handed out before the meeting a summary of where things are sort of involving, but it's a situation always, but it's a snapshot. I think specifically, we wanted to just kind of summarize, you know, at the meeting on November 1, a lot of the things came out that were just getting contracts signed and task orders moving, so all of that has taken place. Hilltop Road continues to be on track for 90% plans, which are bid documents by the end of the year. And that is for the complete project, not just the temporary or first phase of it. So that project kind of had leapfrog, was able to be done at once, which is exciting.
I'm sorry, what would, what's by the end of the year?
Plans.
Plans.
In January, we'll be at 90% and then we'll put the bid documents together to bid out the construction. And that will be formal federal procurement rules. So everything is moving along as is. You'll see in there some of the details. You know, just as an example, from the sort of questions we did from FEMA, they wanted the lat long coordinates for a pipe they believed did not exist. And so we had to do those sorts of things. So lots of details, but moving along as scheduled. The golf course work, as we have it grouped, is partially complete. And the golf course bridges are, the bid is posted for that, and those are due on the very first. So we'll be able to get that contract taken care of right at the beginning of the new year. And the temporary repair shoring at the Lakeview Center, we expect those documents end this week. And we can get the floodplain development permit done very soon thereafter. And then we'll also post the bid to get the request for quotes, which is simple given the threshold for the cost. So that won't take very long.
But at that particular point, we don't, we can go and get three bids, but we're not required for the, for, for, for three bids. I mean, we've got, it's less than $10,000, but we already have an idea of. So while, that just is going to delay it further and further.
It's just, it's just a working week. We'll, we'll post, we have a standard, we'll, we'll post and we'll email folks in town standard stuff. And we'll get those, and then we'll respond, responsive dinner, we'll, we'll get that.
So can't we go with the bid that we've already got?
We cannot.
And why is that?
Well, we've been through, we've been over this. The, those bids respond to engineering documents that were not properly procured. And those, so we have to go through the proper procurement process. We're just jumping through hoops that are imposed upon us.
I would disagree that we have to do that.
Okay.
So let me ask. I've understood during comments that the recreation staff that's currently using that as office said they're not going anywhere.
That's not true.
I just, that's what I was trying to clear out. They know that at some point, and hopefully in the near future, they will be relocated, correct?
Yes.
So I'm not sure what the confusion was there, but I just wanted people to understand that they will be moving. One of whom will be staying, I understand it because that's the person that manages the senior activities.
That's correct.
So I just wanted to address that.
So what kind of a timeframe can we tell the public?
For which specifically?
Well, for getting the Lakeview Center open.
I think the biggest question will be how fast the contractor can start work. That's always when you're doing a construction project, you get them under contract. And one of the things you say in your bid is you have to be able to go start work and get permits within X amount of time. And that particular one will be very aggressive and say, you need to be able to start work immediately, which is not typical, nor you say permits within two weeks or something like that. But that one will be, you know, expedited to, within all the, you know, limitations of the law.
So we really don't know when? It could be next year?
I, well, by the time we have, we get the permits and we get the bid and we award the contract, I think it'd be very early, you know, in January.
So, and we issued the bid, we issued the permits, correct?
That's right.
So permits could be issued immediately.
Yeah, you have to have plans to submit, but yes, I can't just issue them.
I just hope that we could get them in by Christmas.
So those were the three we, we wanted to hit the highlights on.
No question.
Others on there.
I didn't quite hear you when you spoke about the golf course.
So the, the documents for the bridges are posted for bid, and those are due the 31st. And so we'll be able to get those under contract right after the first of the year, too.
And the equipment, I know we have more equipment coming in.
Mid-February now.
February.
What was the reason for that? First, it was November, then December, now February.
It is not as readily available as they once thought it was in November.
But that's not, that's not preventing us from opening once we get the bridges done. We could open it without the new equipment, correct?
Well, you've just got limited equipment to maintain the course with, I mean, but yeah.
I mean, that's rough mowers, not green mowers or fairway mowers.
I'm not sure what we've got and what we're missing at this point. I'd have to look again, but we're waiting on, I think, four or five different pieces. I'd have to look and see what that is.
Jessica, a little translation on our sheet. We have the abbreviation DDD. I don't know what that means, so.
Damage dimension.
Not needed to be a quiz.
Description, description, dam, damage, yeah, description, dimension, damage.
Okay, and so when that's next to a project, that's telling me?
So FEMA did not appropriately scope some of our projects, and we were told to bring in, they, to bring in engineers to write new scopes. And so that's where a few of those are. That's what they're doing right now.
In process.
Yes, because once they take that data, it has to go to FEMA and they have to, it has to be evaluated and go back through that process.
I know that we've applied for a lot of loans and grants, some forgivable, some not, some low interest, some not. Is there any way that each month that you could give us a tally of what money that we're going to have you to borrow so that when it comes spring and we begin to do budgeting?
Oh, sure.
Then we can see exactly how much payments are going to be?
Well, I, I think where that, the short answer is yes. The more complicated answer, because you know I'm always going to come with a follow-up that's not as fun, is that's, it's going to be a rapidly evolving position. In part because there just are so many things that we are pursuing, which is good. The more complicated part is particularly related to bridge loans. Bridge loans are intended to give you liquidity, which is positive, but they have to be paid and repaid in a fairly short order. The problem is FEMA does not make determinations of eligibility in a quick fashion. And so we've played a pretty conservative hand so far, which has been to our advantage. We would have erred seriously had we done work that FEMA later would have said is not eligible, and then you're still on the hook for some of those bridge loans. So those in particular, we're going to have to have some, a careful watch on a lot of discussion where to try to avoid creating liability that's not funded back by a federal program.
But the big thing is for, it's maybe in the air, we were telling people, how much are we going to have to pay back?
Absolutely, a debt analysis.
We got, we got to know that information.
Yes, it'll just keep evolving, is all I'm saying, as we get, moves in time.
This board then can receive a monthly amount of what we've already borrowed and what we're going to have to pay back, and the timeframe that we have to pay it back in. So that when it comes to budget time, then we have some idea about how much that we're on the hook for.
Right, and so far, all you have are your DEQ bridge loan and your state bridge loan, which you guys have appropriated in our November 1 meeting primarily, and we will.
Well, yeah, you appropriated, but I mean, it's just going to be a matter of how much we're going to have to pay each year.
You have to pay it back when you get your FEMA reimbursement. So it's, it's not, it's a little different than typical financing situations where you have a steady payment. If you had $100,000 from state bridge loan and FEMA paid you back eight months later, you're required to pay it back. So it's.
But not installments during those ages?
That's right, that's right. It has to, you have to pay it back. So, but those are the only two loans at this time. I, I don't think that that will be your only two for, for all setting done, but currently. Just know that there isn't a lot of debt liability at the moment.
But you will let us know that each month?
Yes.
I mean, from, from the state cash flow loan and the North Carolina DEQ bridge loan, right now you've got $5.4 million total as of right now.
Out of that $5.4, what, how much of that do you, or do you think we're going to have to pay back?
I have absolutely no clue.
All of it, if you use it. It's, I mean, we've budgeted it out.
Do you mean FEMA reimbursement versus us paying?
Well, it's going to be broken back. As to what we are going to be on the hook for?
Hopefully none.
After.
The goal is none. That's why we're being very, very careful because we don't have appropriate, you know, we don't have revenues planned for that. So we want to align it with federal eligibility, whether it's FHWA, which some, one of these with Crackmont Road aligns with, or the rest with the FEMA public assistance process. So we want to move forward, but carefully so that we work within those eligibility determinations.
So in summary, we have not taken out any loans on projects that we don't feel quite confident FEMA should be able to reimburse us for. I know you can't guarantee all that, but this is what, this is what.
We have.
If there's a natural disaster.
You have budgeted them for things that are FEMA-eligible.
Thank you, that's better language, yeah.
That, that's the best, I think, most confident thing I can say.
No, no, I'll tell you this quick story. Luckily, we're not in the horror story that Avery County is, where they had to spend $40 million in debris removal costs, and they've still not got that repaid yet from FEMA.
They're paying $2 million a month.
Their budget must be, I mean, you're not a big.
It's not a big, it's not a big county, so that's scary.
Any other questions?
Just, Jessica and Josh, go back to Lakeview for a second. I know that the, the temporary plan should be submitted for this week. Can you just send out an email or something to let us know that those have been received so that, so we can stay on top of it when people ask us in the community? We don't want to fall behind on it.
Absolutely. Will you call on Jamie back in there to come talk about Ridgeway and speed humps or bumps and sidewalks? Thank you, buddy. So talk to council a little bit about information you got when you did the research on Ridgeway Avenue for speed humps and sidewalks, correct?
So when talking to the contractor about those, those two items, they're very logistical. Sidewalk being the main one because it's going, it would be, have to be installed on the west side of town, which there's a lot of driveways, a lot of utilities from power, water lines.
Yes, that's what he meant.
Yes, the right side if you're going south toward the lower end of Sutton. So it's very, very expensive. I have those numbers wrote down. I'd be more glad to share that with you. One that I do remember, though, is on the, the speed humps and sharrows. And sharrows is the markings that they use. Them are usually about $8,500 apiece. They're supposed to be designed where a snowplow can go over those sharrows. As far as lifespan on them, it's just like a paved road. It just depends on where it's at, whether it's on the north side and it freezes and thaws a lot, or whether it's on the south side and in the sun all day. It depends on how long it'll last. So you're probably, depending on, winters are not too bad, don't seem like anymore. We don't get too many snows, but when they do, that's exactly when they would take a beating. You could, you know, that's the thing that most people go to as far as what towns want, as far as emergency vehicles crossing and stuff. Now, if you just go with the regular speed bump, you're going to come out a lot cheaper. But the maintenance, you, in the, in the long run, you're going to pay more money because you're going to keep replacing them a lot more often than you would if, if you went with the, the share road style speed bumps, which is more like a table. It's got a little more of a tabletop to it than just an actual curb across the road, basically. So that was talking with one of the main contractors, Lonesome Mountain Paving, which has been in business and done this for well over 30, 40 years, I think, he told me.
Jamie, I think that concrete, the sidewalk estimate came in at $300,000.
Yeah, $300,000, thank you. But he said that was, that sidewalk was on the low end. That's just him coming out and taking a look at it without really getting into the utilities and the stuff that would need to be done. He said it could be as high as a half a million dollars time it was done.
Is this looking at the sidewalk being on the west side of, of Ridgeway? We're talking about this coming from US 70 down to the bush to curb.
Yes, from State Street down on the west-hand side going toward Bush.
Putting it on the east side down to, down to Sutton Street and then cross over and then go down so that you avoid so much of the ditch. You avoid getting into the parking of the pizza place. Get into the parking of, you know, where the Sunshine Pharmacy is.
Right. I did, I did not, I just got the quotes on what I was asked to get the quotes on.
I knew what you needed to crosswalk then to get a, you know, either way, it's going to be.
Thanks for, yeah. And sorry, then.
And then there's a lot of drainage issues as well. And then there's a lot of drainage issues, as we all know, on that road too, so that's a lot of stuff too, that, you know, he didn't have to-
Because I remember the last time we were here, or maybe not last time, before last, Michelle gave us a figure, it's right at five dollars a square foot, and so that when you figure, the sidewalk is five feet wide, fifty dollars square. Then you're looking at two hundred and fifty, and now you're looking at about a thousand. So it comes out for a whole lot less than-
Five foot wide and minimum four inches thick, so.
But bids are what they offer.
Right.
But I would hope that that's what we would do, to try to save some money.
Right.
And, and the number for the speed humps again?
Eighty-five hundred for the ones that, you know, that they recommend. The ones that I would recommend also, if you want some that's going to last, the others are just like you'd go through in a, in a parking lot.
It's eighty-five hundred each?
Each, that's right.
And we would need-
Well, that's where we'd have to look into the manual, uniform control device manual that's given out by the traffic engineer to go by. Depends on the length of the road, what the speed limit is, you got to do it for me.
There's a standard.
There's a formula for it, so I can do that if you need that.
That would be helpful.
Yeah, I can get that.
The problem is, this is not storm damage, so I'm not sure who's going to fund it, you know, like-
Yeah, we are.
Right, you know, and that, and that's one thing like power bill, you know, we're very limited on power bill funds, of course, as we all know, because it can be used for specific things like sidewalks and engineering and stuff, but, you know, power bill would, would cover those if the funding was in there, because it's street-related.
We just get a lot less paving done.
Yeah, depending on how many sharrows or speed humps you get, but, you know, we just completed some paving too, so that's a good thing.
But it would apply if power bill would, would-
Would cover that, if that's funding that you wanted to use or funding that was available.
You want us to get a, a kind of a full, more of a full estimate and then use the east side for sidewalk down to center and come back across? Or, it's up to you.
I'd love, I'd love to continue learning.
So looking at, just kind of looking at all the options we've got, so looking, looking not only at the west side, looking at the east side as a possibility too.
The east side is definitely going to be way cheaper, just because there are a lot less things you're going to have to, you're going to have to deal with on the east side of that street.
So why did the, why did that, why did, why were we talking about the west side?
I don't know. I was asked to get a quote down that side of the road.
Okay.
I don't know if it was rideaway issue or what, I'll have to go back and take a look. A lot of times on rideaways, people think the rideaway is from the center of the road and out on both sides, but that's not always true. Sometimes it'd be from the center of the road and it'd be thirty foot on one side, it may not be but ten on the other side. So that's something you got to look at. If not, then you get into easement issues, sort of like we done on Monterey Road, where you got to deal with the homeowner and things of that nature.
So it seems like there's a lot of information that folks are wanting and are wondering if this should be an, an agenda item for next month?
Potentially, we can try our best to get it together for next month.
Or February, I mean-
Yep.
Is that-
So you want me to get quotes for the east side of the road?
Please.
Yeah, and we'll get more-
All of our options.
Yeah, more, how many of those speed tables we need, et cetera.
I'll figure that out too, and then I'll, I'll put something together for you.
Okay. Good enough, thank you.
Ma'am, communications from Mayor and Town Council.
It was good to see that many people here tonight, hear all the comments. I'll remind everybody, I've been here for seventy-five years. This is a small town. This is one of the things that is, one of the beauties of this small town, is that we can come together, we can talk about things, and I hope that we can continue to move and help people in their businesses, because that is the backbone of our, of our town. Counsel?
Yeah, I, I maybe piggyback on that a little bit. Yeah, I know that a lot of people have, have left already, but I want to thank everyone who, who came to speak tonight, but also who emailed and called and who's been engaged over the last several months. I think, I think it's really good to have this level of civic engagement. And, you know, back in twenty twenty when I ran and was elected for the first time, and I ran on, on a platform of, of public, public involvement and public engagement, especially with communities or parts of the community that had traditionally not been as involved. You know, and I think I've been successful in that a little bit, over, well, I, I think I've been successful in that over the last, over the last few years in particular, but mostly on like a one-on-one level, you know, meeting with people regularly, meeting with businesses regularly to talk about ideas or concerns or, or whatever. But I think, you know, especially over the last year, you know, it's, it's evident that we haven't provided the best, the best platform for, for people to, to feel involved and to get information and gain information. And, you know, I don't know exactly what that solution looks like, but I do know that, you know, it is obviously very critical that, that we, that we improve in that, in that side, and I'm committed to, to doing that. And, you know, we'll continue to do my best to, to get out information, to have, to be a, a person that people can speak with and share, share concerns or, or thoughts with. You know, we, we don't want to be a community where, where people fear the government. And, and, you know, and I will do my best to make sure that, that we can kind of transition into, away from that, that mindset for certain, some people. But shifting gears, I do want to really publicly thank the Chamber of Commerce for their work over the past weekend with Holly Jolly and the parade. I thought both events were incredibly successful. Also thank everyone who came out to those events, it was so crowded and joyful and wonderful to be out downtown this weekend. Thank the businesses who participated in the window decorations, who hosted, I think Lookout and Perry had like viewing parties for the parade. I don't know, it's just a really wonderful time to be in Black Mountain over the past, past few days. And grateful for the Chamber for organizing that, with the town. That's all I got.
Anybody else?
No.
Town manager and town attorney?
I don't have anything. I'll just say the town will be closed for the twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth in observance of the Christmas holiday, and then closed again on January the first in observance of New Year's Day.
Except not New Year's Eve.
We'll be open New Year's Eve. And that's it.
You want to speak?
Yeah.
No, actually you won't say something?
Not going to take too much off of what Doug just said, which is very true. It was good to hear everybody speak tonight and, and, and tell us exactly how you feel. I know, I don't have issues with that, and I don't know what else does either. I don't think anyone or a board does. We are fallible. We are human, which makes us fallible. But we also can learn and, and, and do what I think is probably necessary, a, and, and that's to listen and hear what you have to say. I think that's the best thing that we can do. Hopefully that, hearing that, your concerns, that we can speak to those more frequently and more often and more openly. At least that's going to be my goal.
Okay, thanks. Before we move on to the consent agenda, I do want to go ahead and say that not only did the Chamber do a good job, but the, congratulations to Chief Parker and to his men, and the men that Jamie has in Public Works that spent their time setting up all the barriers and then taking them down. Damn good job.
And the cert team.
The cert team.
And the cert.
Yes.
Exactly. And I'm glad we have them. And at one time, I hope that we can talk about them and have them come and do a little presentation, so that people know exactly what type of-
They're so excited, they'd love to do that. They are, they are a gumbo.
Yeah. All right. Consent agenda?
All right, consent agenda tonight, seven A will be adoption of the two thousand twenty-six Town Council meeting schedule, consideration of the two thousand twenty-six holiday schedule, the monthly tax collector report, seven D is a resolution to adopt the Buckham County Long-Term Recovery Plan, seven E, a resolution authorizing the Town of Black Mountain to apply for North Carolina Department of Commerce Small Business Infrastructure Program funding for the Stormwater Capacity Improvement Project. And I'll just remind you again, like I did in the, in the agenda meeting, we've already gotten this funding once and they asked us to come back again and apply for it again. So we're going to hopefully get another million dollars to help with some stormwater issues in town. Seven F, resolution supportive of the North Carolina Department of Transportation Project Plan for Black Mountain. This would be updating crosswalks on East State Street as well as Flat Creek Road, both in the vicinity of the schools. Seven G will be appointment to the Black Mountain Library Maintenance Board. Seven H will be a consideration of fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget amendments, one of those being twenty-eight thousand dollars from the Police Department to the Helene Fund to cover engineering services for the Public Safety Building. The next one will be three thousand dollars that will be transferred from a sale of a vehicle back to the PD budget for repair and maintenance, and then a hundred and twenty thousand dollars from power bill fund balance to cover paving we did this year. Seven I will be a town attorney performance evaluation document approval, and then seven J, resolution of acceptance of dedication of utility easements.
Okay, now here a motion to accept a consent agenda?
Submit.
All right.
I have a-
Question?
Question.
Go ahead.
Yeah, for seven B, the holiday schedule, I just, I wanted to notice that it, it does match Buckham County, which I think one year we didn't, and then it was, got a little wacky, but I did notice that the only difference here is they're having December twenty-eighth recognized, kind of after the Christmas tonic. I, I don't know that we need that day off, but just putting it out, am I mistaken?
Yeah.
I can let Wesley speak.
In our, the town's personnel policy, it, however Christmas falls determines the dates that we're closed, so-
Okay.
The only time that the town is closed for three days is if Christmas Day falls on a Wednesday or a Thursday. And then the rest is two days closed, depending on how it reads.
If we're internally consistent, in fact, just notice that a lot of that out there, do we have this sanitation schedule prepared as well?
We do have it prepared, yes, that will go-
Can I get that information, please?
Yes.
All right, anybody else got any comments? If not, all in favor?
Mr. Mayor, before we move on, just can I say thank you to these folks that have, we just approved a new person on our town library, ma-, uh, what's it called?
Maintenance Board.
Maintenance Board, which fills out the full team, and I didn't want to go get past it without saying thank you to Ken Holland, Kev Holland, who's, he applied for some other positions, volunteer positions, a lot of that, but he also indicated he was willing to do this, and since it was in the consent agenda, he could, I just wanted to say thank you out loud to him and all the people that are serving.
All right, thank you. No public hearing, no more citizen comments?
Unfinished business.
Unfinished business.
So if you recall, we talked about this a little bit last month, specifically, this is an ordinance to amend the code of ordinance, this is chapter forty-seven, to add a new section, forty-seven dash one sixty-five for wheel vehicles other than bicycles and skates. We did make some changes to that. I know the Chief of Police was, was asked a question here during that meeting, and I think we've got everything in here now, where we didn't have it all in there last time.
If I could just interrupt for a second, Josh, one of the things that, you know, people keep asking about these things, and I would have wondered whether or not the chief was able to go ahead and to address one of the traffic issues that we have.
I think a few of those, a few of those geese got tickets, I think.
Foul play.
For foul play.
Notice, look, they all, their information's-
And they're turning around.
But did they say?
I, I didn't see any wings go up.
Okay.
Excuse me, Josh, go ahead.
No, that's fine.
One, Kirsten, did you have a, Kirsten, did you have a comment? Oh, okay.
No.
Sorry, Doug, I thought there might have been a comment. I'm sorry, nevermind.
So I'm happy to, I'm happy to read over this for you again, restrictions, so section forty-seven dash one sixty-five states restrictions on use of bicycles, toy vehicles and similar devices. No person upon roller skates or riding in or by any means of a skateboard, coaster, sled, tricycle, I can't even pronounce that word, velo- I can't pronounce it, I'm not sure how you say that. A toy vehicle, hoverboard, electric scooter, motorized play vehicle, or any other similar device shall go, shall go upon any roadway, sidewalk, pedestrian walkway within the downtown business district, except while crossing a street at a sidewalk. Crossing a street or sidewalk, when, when crossing a street or crosswalk, such person shall be granted all rights and be subject to all duties applicable to pedestrians under the same circumstances. This section shall not apply to infant carrying equipment, strollers or mobility devices designed and used by persons with disabilities. Nothing in this section shall prohibit the lawful operation of bicycles or other permitted vehicles in the roadway as defined and authorized under North Carolina general statutes. It shall be lawful, unlawful for any person to use or operate any device in a manner that interferes with or disturbs pedestrian traffic, creates a safety hazard, or obstructs the free passage of persons in the downtown area. Severability, if any section, subsection, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance for any reason is held to be invalid, such decision shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. I know specifically we put in the strollers and mobility devices, I think there was some concern that was brought up.
Thank you for the clarity on that.
I appreciate the work that went into the wording to do it right, and I know this is all about safety on the sidewalks and so on, and I don't need to tell the Active Mobility Commission how to, that we want to get people out of their cars and sit feeling safe out in, in our community, riding their bikes or whatever, because they are, they are very knowledgeable on that, they know exactly where you're going. But I'd just like to continue that, like, share the, share the, the roadways and that kind of thing, so all of our, not just on sidewalks, but everywhere that people can feel safe in alternate modes of transportation out on our streets.
I think this is a great example of citizens reaching out via email and saying keep this up in the meeting and making it happen, so.
Can you, do I hear a motion?
I'll move to approve the, amending the town code ordinances as presented to add this new section.
Any discussion? Seeing, hearing, none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, now you have new business. Eleven A, approval of the revised memorandum of understanding between the town and the Black Mountain Beautification Committee specifically related to our downtown trees and planters. Y'all had a chance to look over the MOU.
I've got a question on that. Do we have, the town square's looking good. Things are growing well, trees are growing tall. And when you come up Broadway, I'm just afraid that as we begin year after year, those trees are going to start masking the mountain if we can't trim the tops of them some.
Sure we can.
I'm cutting them back five, six feet, just enough to where we can still keep that view shift, because there's a beautiful view shift that you've been working on. If you could talk with them about that, I'd be pleased.
Sure.
Thanks.
I have a question. Do we have anybody here from that group tonight? I don't think so.
Anyone here from the-
Beautification or the treaty committee? Well, we have a long history with Beautification Committee and the town staff partnering successfully and working together super well, and I just applaud their efforts. It's been wonderful to, to be able to work together like that, and I- to be able to work together like that, and I applaud this effort as well. It feels to me, I'd like to see a little more detail in this MOU though. It's, we're gonna allocate annual budget funds for ongoing maintenance of all downtown trees, including watering, pruning, fertilizing, and general care. That's on us, on the town. It seems a little too open-ended to me, like, how much is, how much are we talking about? How much staff time are we thinking this will require? I'm not saying I'm against doing this, but I think if you don't out, if you don't define the expectations a little bit clearly going at the beginning, you're setting up some frustration down the road that we didn't do our part, but they, it's just better to outline it a little clearer upfront than how much staff time can we really, you know, can, they want, they suggest provide weekly watering of downtown trees and planters and maintain rain barrels. Do we own rain barrels? Do we already have rain barrels down there? So.
We.
I don't know.
In some places.
Some places do.
Okay, and to commit to providing weekly watering of downtown trees and planters. They're fixing to plant, the good news is we got an eight thousand dollar grant from Circle K Corporation, which is fantastic. I'm, I don't mean to sound negative at all, but I just feel like it's just clear, it's it's always better to be clear upfront about our, to be realistic about what our staff can take on, because this is in addition to their, this is mid-year. We've already submitted a budget to us and have their positions, and now we're saying there's more gonna be required. I would, I would like to see a little, like, a little draft budget, how much time we have available to do this kind of work. I know the answer I always get is we'll do the best we can, and I have no doubt that they will. But unless we're clear upfront, it was, I feel like we're setting everybody up for some frustration if they feel like we haven't done our part or pressure on the staff when they've got water pipes that are burst out somewhere and they have to fix them instead. So those are my my thoughts. I'd be interested in the rest of the council. Thanks.
I I think those points are well taken, and it never hurts to have more clarity, so. I don't know, wondering if we invite them to our next meeting or if there's more dialogue that can happen between meetings.
Be happy to reach out to them and see if we can get some type of, you know, preliminary budget together, what that looks like.
I know we're, I mean, I guess I can't presume, but I feel pretty confident that we're all very supportive of this initiative. So it's just a matter of giving a little more clarity.
So we tabling, is that?
Tabling. Yes.
I'll, will you table this?
All right then.
You don't need to. Eleven B, Jessica, will you come in and talk to us about Trout Unlimited Tree Giveaway and Planting at Veterans Park? Eleven B?
For trout, yes.
Yep.
So Trout Unlimited approached the town. They were working with Ann in Recreation just to do some tree donation and plant some trees at Veterans Park where we lost trees in the storm and to provide, to give away some trees in the valley. Their goal is to do, I think, five hundred trees in total. Obviously, we don't need that many trees. It is intended for a wider area, but we wanna be supportive. And we certainly lost several trees in that area we could benefit from, so we just wanted to put that in front of you since that partnership.
I know we got in the description that says that, you know, one of the town's responsibilities would be providing a preferred list of native species that are appropriate for the site, and I suspect y'all already have that information, but I wanted to highlight that for those that might be concerned about that, that we planted or need of trees that should flourish.
That's correct. Ann is very diligent in working with natives, but also finding plants that are particularly happy with wet.
Yes, yes.
Presume we'll be working with or keeping all the other activities in Veterans Park in mind.
Yes, this would be back in the Red Perion Zone that was damaged where trees were plowed out primarily.
I'd like to approve the proposed tree planting at Veterans Park to replace dead or damaged trees in the parking lot and along the riverside walking path and tree giveaway at Veterans Park.
All right. Any discussion, further discussion? If not, all in favor?
I think your last two items, eleven C and D, I think we would request council pull both of these and talk about them at a later meeting.
Just wanna make one comment on here and the fact that the difference between the code of ethics that was passed when Carl Barrett was mayor and I was on board then, and now, the one particular area that I saw some concern on was when you get into the disciplinary part.
The R ten.
Where we've got, in old, we had just central procedures, and now this new one apparently has got some removal.
The first time I heard about it was we all recently had to do that two-hour training with the School of Government, and this is a video, you know, online thing. And that was the first time I ever heard that word, and at the School of Government, professors teaching that course said that had recently been developed as an option. I'm no expert on it, but it was a new, a new idea to me too.
Well, it's a new idea of an old idea. And there's a lot of examples of this recently going on throughout the state. It is an extreme measure. But it is a tool. Doesn't have to be employed, but it is a lawful procedure. And it is something the Institute of Government has put out guidance. So the, a lot of what you did back in two thousand and ten was great. I just simply updated and modernized it with stuff the Institute of Government has guidance on.
I'm not saying that we should not include it. Just trying to explain why it's a tradition.
It's, I didn't make it up. But anyway, it, everything in there is, or at least from the disciplinary side, is, are tools that don't ever have to be used.
In my discussion, there's some people down at the Institute of Government that, you know, they were saying, yeah, you could pass it, but implementing it may be a little difficult.
I think implementing even censor is a, is a, a, a little bit out of the norm process. I don't think any of it would be fun. But it is, hiring an attorney is never fun. Going to court is never fun. There are things out there that are, that are stressful, but these are enforcement mechanisms that are available on the law. They don't have to be employed, but they're out there.
I have, I have lots of thoughts on this too, but are we tabling it or?
Yeah, yeah, we're not talking.
Yeah, I don't wanna get too far. Yeah, it's, it's tabbed.
Okay, got enough then. All right. That's got our, because we'll come to the closed session. So I hear a motion that we go into closed session for personnel.
So moved.
All in favor?